You want to be standing for the pledge, BJ?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Victor, would you like us to make some purges?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this beautiful day that you've allowed us to breathe in and to walk in under our own power. God, we thank you for everything you're doing in the city of Montavista. We ask that your hand will be upon the council, that you allow us to make the decisions that you want here in the city. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray, amen.
Counselor Howard?
Here.
Counselor Locke?
Here.
Counselor Lorenz?
Here.
Mayor Proton Segala?
Here.
Mayor Becker?
Here.
Corbin DeClaire?
Modifications to the agenda?
Yes, sir. We have one to remove J-1 for the resolution of 2023-14 for the zoning parcels located at 60 North Broadway, 1636 Grand Avenue, and 16 Washington that were not originally zoned when the city adopted the zone districts.
So we're going to take those off of the agenda for tonight. It's got a little clerical error that we need to fix, so.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Modify the agenda to remove J-1, Resolution 2023-14, zoning parcels located at 60 North Broadway, 1636 Grand Avenue, and 16 Washington that were not originally zoned when the city adopted the zone districts. Is there any discussion? Morena?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve to the modification to remove J-1, Resolution 2023-14, zoning parcels located at 60 North Broadway, 1636 Grand Avenue, and 16 Washington that were not originally zoned when the city adopted the zone districts.
And just FYI, those are all railroad properties, so.
They're what?
Railroad properties.
Approval of consent agenda, minutes of regular meeting from October 5th, 2023, review and approval of accounts payable. Make the motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from October 5th, 2023, and review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any discussion? Morena?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda for minutes of regular meeting from October 5th, 2023, and review and approval of accounts payable.
Okay, we have no proclamations, communications, appointments. So we'll move to citizen comments. And special presentations. Citizen comments. City council welcomes your unscheduled comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes and council will not take any action at this meeting. Any comments, Margot?
Always. Greetings, council. Gee, gee, yeah. I just want to say kudos to Rob and his crew for the wonderful job they're doing on trimming the trees. They are really, I mean, you know, those trees are old with, huh, and they're doing a really, really nice job. And the way this fall has been, our little town has been just gorgeous with the colors, people who are keeping up their yards a little better or that. And I also have to say, I visited all the new stores on Adams, and boy, have we got some neat little stores. Wonderful, the ladies who run the stores and what is available to purchase is just a delight. And I know where I'm going to do my Christmas shopping. So, thank you.
Thank you, Margot. Anybody else? Okay, we'll go on to scheduled appearances. In order to be included on that portion of the agenda, you have to fill out appropriate paperwork for the 7:30, no later than noon on Monday prior to the meeting. Our first one will be Proposition HH, Colorado State Representative Matthew Martinez.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm here to talk about a very complex issue that is going to be on the ballot and that you should already have. It's Proposition HH. So I'll go into a little background as to like how it got on the ballot in the first place and kind of what's in it. It's a very confusing and complicated measure, so that's why I'm here to kind of explain what's in it. So this was passed in the last part of session. So this is a direct result of the Gallagher Amendment being repealed and the state decided, well, we needed to be able to fix this problem that was going to come up. This is the last probably three days of the session. It is a very, very big bill and there were amendments that were coming on all the way until the very last day of session. So for some context, the day that it was up in the House, I think it was about three days in the total, General Assembly total, I had the bill, I had all of the graphs and charts and everything, trying to figure out what this is. This is not my first language, I don't claim that it is for me, but trying to figure this out as amendments were coming on was very frustrating. So it passed both chambers. I voted no against that as well as some of my colleagues, but it had enough to go to the ballot for everybody to vote on. So really, what's, the main point of this is, is that it's addressing the property tax issue. With property valuations going up because of the Gallagher Amendment repeal, this is a method to be able to address that. It is a very minimal decrease in your property taxes. And the consequences of that is exactly why I voted no. So with lower property taxes, all of the special districts throughout the state are going to receive less funding than what they normally would under this. There was an assurance from the governor's office to say that there was going to be some sort of backfill measure to be able to make sure that those were replenished. However, that only favors the high-growth areas first and if there's anything left, then it will go to the lower-growth areas. So obviously, the Denburs, the Walders, the Fort Collins of the world, those are going to be getting their first shot at that backfill measure to replenish what the special districts are losing. Everywhere in the valley is looking at about a 5% to 7% rate increase and so that's an average rate increase, but that's the lowest in the state. So there's no guarantee that there's going to be any backfill measures for any of our special districts here in the rural areas parts of the state. So again, for a very minimal decrease in your property tax valuation or in your property taxes, that consequence, I didn't feel was really worth it and I don't think that it's going to impact the rural areas and in the southern part of the state very well at all. So I would advise a no vote on that. And what really, we still have the problem, right? So if Proposition HH doesn't pass, we still have the problem of really high valuations and property taxes. So what we're hoping for is that this kind of forces the hand in saying, if this fails, we still need to address the problem, that we would get called back into a special session. For those that don't know, a special session can only be called by the governor and you're only in certain specific areas that you can focus on and get bills passed. So this would be our hope, is that we would call for a special session to address just this issue before our regular session starts back up in January. So, happy to take any questions. I know it's a very complex bill, but it's the best way that I can explain it, that really kind of makes sense. There's a lot in there about where stuff goes, but that's pretty much the layman's terms of what we're dealing with and what everyone will vote on.
Who was the sponsor of the bill?
The sponsor of the bill was Representative Chris Kennedy in the House and I believe Senator Benberg in the Senate, but I could be wrong on the Senate sponsor.
And where's Kennedy from?
Denver.
So when you say special districts, explain that.
Sure, so like your water districts, your fire districts, mosquito districts, all of those will not receive the same amount of tax funding that they normally get because this will decrease that value, what they get in there. And so that's where that backfill mechanism comes into place. There's a pot of money that they set aside saying, we're going to have this available for any special districts that lose any of that funding throughout this process to be able to get them, you know, whatever they lost with it. But again, that pot's very limited and it's going to favor the high-growth areas over the low-growth areas. So there's only two districts that got exempted out throughout the bill process. So it was the ambulance districts and the, I believe, like the firefighter districts are the only two that got exempted out. Everybody else will lose out on their revenue from that.
Will that can, like, for the municipalities, will that create loss for municipality as well?
Absolutely, absolutely, yes. So, yeah, and that's something that was brought up multiple times throughout the process, but again, it was very short. This was like the last bill that we dealt with at the end of session, so there wasn't a whole lot of time to be able to discuss and debate this before the end of session. So for those that don't know, by statute, we can only be in session 120 days. So once that clock strikes midnight on the 120th day, anything that's not on the calendar or that hasn't been heard dies. And so that's why this was brought up. There was a very, there was a time crunch on this and that's ultimately what ended up happening with it, so. There's a few members of my party, myself included, that voted against this measure just because we felt that this was not going to be beneficial. But unfortunately, there just wasn't enough to get it stopped. So now it's going back to the voters to decide, so. There's also another ballot measure on there that is kind of accompanying with HH and it relates to Tabor refunds. And so your Tabor refunds, that ballot measure, I forget the number of it, but what it does is it stabilizes your Tabor refund for two to three years at the rate that we have been receiving. So I think it's like the five, almost close to $600 for a single file, double for that for a joint filer. That stabilizes it for three years, but it only goes into effect if you vote for HH.
Representative Martinez?
Yes.
So can you explain, because of course now that the commercials are on and some are saying that Tabor refunds will not go away and others are saying that it will go away, can you kind of explain that a little bit?
Sure, so pretty much that's where the money comes from, from this. It is from the Tabor refunds that we all get. It's hard to say, I did all the financial analysis with this and the reason why Tabor refunds are hard to judge is because you can only do about a two- to three-year window with it just because the economy grows, the economy changes, and so that differs on what kind of refund that you get. So the early projections are with the Tabor stabilization refunds if it passes, including with this, that the impact on Tabor will probably be significant. So, but again, it's hard to judge, so at least within the first two, three years. But between stabilizing the Tabor refunds for everybody and having the backfill measure for everybody or throughout the state, that's probably going to be minimized with that. Again, it's hard to judge five to 10 years out just because we don't really know where the economy is going to be and whether it's going to increase, decrease, how much people are making, we're just not entirely sure of that.
And then isn't the, when you said that the decrease in your property taxes is minimal, isn't it less than 1%?
Correct. You're talking for this area, maybe, maybe between $600 and $1,000 on savings on your property tax this year. And again, the long-term outcome of this is really detrimental for a $600 to $1,000 decrease in your property taxes. And again, that's no guarantee within the next five years because again, predicting that stuff that far out is really difficult. Property taxes could continue to grow, or property valuations could continue to grow at the rate that they've been and then this may not even be the correct solution to be able to fix that either.
And then this probably isn't a fair question, so if we put you on the spot, I understand because it's hard to remember past sessions, but my, our financial director wants me to ask you if you can recall what Senate Bill 238 is. Because that's impacting the city's, our revenue by $56,000 this year, $59,000 this year. And so, so this is the first year that that one has kicked into place. And then if HH passes, then we will lose an additional approximate $116,000. So, and for the audience, you know, the city pretty much relies on sales tax, but property tax is still an important component of our revenue, but it'll really hit Rio Grande County, which is going to impact all of us as well. They'll standardize quite a bit more.
I will have to do some digging on Senate Bill 238 and get back with you all on really kind of what's in it and I guess more detail on that, but I'm happy to come back once I get some of that research done and.
Oh, that's okay. I can look it up, so. Yeah, I know you're busy. So I want to thank Representative Martinez for coming in and speaking against it. I did make an attempt to find someone that wanted to speak in favor. I couldn't find anybody locally, in fairness. AARP has come out, they are in favor of it. But our neighboring communities and Action 22 and, and.
CML.
Yeah, Colorado Municipal League.
CCI as well.
Colorado County Seat, they are all opposing it as well.
Is there any questions on like the benefits, I guess, of HH or what they're projecting?
Well, are there benefits?
So the one benefit that was brought up in this is again, this is a long-term deal after it's been in effect for a while, is there's potentially, and I emphasize that, potentially, funding available for education funding for the K-12 school districts that they want to increase and for the education funding that there may be money available if everything plays out how they're saying to be able to do that. So right now, we've been under what's called the budget stabilization factor in the state and essentially the state borrowed against the education fund and they've been trying to repay that since. So this year, we did the largest buy-down of the budget stabilization factor since its inception and with no intention of going back. However, that only gets you up to about a 1994 level of funding for any education for K-12. And so like that's also a pitch that they were saying is that if potentially that there's, there would be money that they would be able to funnel that into the education fund and be able to help out those districts. But again, that's if everything stays the same and property valuations don't continue to increase at the rate that they have been because then that's going to deplete that pot of money after then what it's, then what they have it in, so.
So in turn, that would still go to the larger front-range schools and such because they base it on county, correct?
Not necessarily. So that one is just because it all goes into the bigger formula, the K-12 funding formula. So there's a lot of different factors between size, between the type of students that they serve, the area that they're in, and that all goes into like what kind of funding that they have if there's any mill levies in that particular county. And so really, it's trying to, it's definitely not perfect, I will never say that, but it really balances it out so that the schools that can fundraise and that have a higher mill levy and can get that funding into their schools are going to receive actually less state funding than schools that are in rural areas that may not have the ability to do that. But I guess I go all the way back to this, like that pot of money is fine that they're talking about. So I'm worried that even though we have that, you know, potential out there saying, hey, that, you know, that this might be a long-term effect of this, that that money may not be there in 10 years and we may have to resolve this issue again and again and again before that timeframe happens, so. So in my personal opinion, and the reason why I voted no on this bill when it was up in the General Assembly was because, one, our special districts are going to lose out on funding and there's really no guarantee or promise that we're going to have any sort of funding to be able to get that corrected. And two, at the rate that it happened, I would have liked to seen a little bit more discussion than three days on something that was so massive and that's going to really change, you know, the course of Colorado in general than what we did, so.
Thanks, man. Appreciate you.
Yeah, any other questions?
Bye.
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you for being here.
So, Mr. Mayor and Council, there is a resolution in your packet opposing this? If you so desire to bring that up and oppose it.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 23-12, Resolution of the City of Montavista opposing Proposition HH and undue limitation on municipal budgets and local control of property tax relief.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 23-12, Resolution of the City of Montavista opposing Proposition HH and undue limitations on municipal budgets and local control of property tax relief. Is there any discussion?
Would you like me to read it or are you going to read it or you don't need it read?
Do you need to read it?
I don't think you have to read it. I mean, it's pretty unanimous and I don't know whether you saw the articles in the paper or not. If not, they're here, opposing Proposition HH. CML has opposed it and via loss of property tax to the city, so it's pretty obvious. But be glad to read it if you want it.
Would it clarify it for people?
No.
Okay, then we'll just carry the vote. It's clear. Morena?
Counselor Howard?
Aye.
Counselor Locke?
Aye.
Counselor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Segala?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve Resolution 2023-12, opposing property.
Proposition HH.
Okay. Proposition HH.
What?
Presenting, no.
Proposition HH. Denyed limitation on municipal budgets and local control of property tax relief.
Okay, we'll go to Sanchez Park, Gregory Sanchez.
Honorable Mayor, distinguished council members, I have the honor this evening to make two proposals of which I would request council approval. This concerns the Jody Sanchez Park in Lariat. Like all of you and all of our citizens, probably, we wonder why each park has a particular name associated with this. The events that I'm going to present here happened 56, 46 years ago. And, yeah, so we have a historical aspect in this. I too asked the question, why the park was named Jody Sanchez Park? And in the absence of the official minutes of the council meetings when it was designated that, we prepared, when I say we, I had my colleagues, Lariat elders who were there at the time. We had fortunate Ms. Bella Pacheco was with us and of course, Richard Sanchez, who were there at the time. So we produced a paper, which you have probably in front of you there. Effectively, the occurrences that were taking place there was the annexation of Lariat. So incorporated Lariat into Montavista. And in doing that, of course, many people were involved. There was the 1966 City Council, which reached agreement with the Lariat City Community Council to, Lariat was to present their petitions for annexation, which were approved. And all this went through the 1968 City Council, of which J.D. Sanchez was first appointed. If I may, pass out some photocopies.
Let me do it for you.
So although the annexation was approved in 1968, the implementation of the whole thing fell on the council of 1968, which you'll have. The 1968 council was historic in the sense that before that, there was only three council members and after that, there were five council members, of which J.D. Sanchez and Jim Jones were appointed to serve as the two. They both won reelection in '70 and '72. So in essence, in addition to, of course, many other accomplishments, which was, one of them was the vocational school, which was financed, built, and put in operation. And the Sky High Stampede Swimming Pool was another accomplishment during that period. So the Sanchez family were thinking about, maybe a memorial could be appropriate. And so over the last year or so, we've came up with the proposed memorial. I think you all have this or should, would you like copies?
We have it. Yeah, sir. Paper copy, we can grade.
Thank you, sir.
I've got one, thank you.
Okay, so in essence, they have here an individual turning a valve which brings in water and sanitation to the district and so that's what this basically is presenting here. The proposal is on the fifth page there of the measurements. So the base, I think, is four feet and the actual statue, the just over five feet. So this is the proposal that we would like to make. That is the Sanchez family. And with regard to the financing of it, basically, a sculpture is illustrated in the attached drawing is proposed for approval by the city council based on the understanding that beyond whatever resources the city council may wish to commit, all expenses associated with the sculpture, production, delivery, and erection estimated at $30,000, $35,000 would be paid by the J.D. Sanchez family, which would also request that council authorize the family to reach out to foundations and other institute interested parties for financial support. So this is the proposal, one of them. I'll go on to the second proposal if you, unless you have any questions on this one?
Ready? Go ahead and continue.
Okay, the second proposal is expansion of the park. You all are aware of the park at the moment. If you don't mind, I'll have another hand down.
Here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So at the moment, as you know, the park is located on Clay and Pennsylvania there. And there is an empty lot, which the owner has divided into three lots. So he's prepared to sell one of the lots, which is the ten thousand square feet. And I'm not altogether sure the exact size of the, of the park itself, but it may, you know, almost double the size of the park. The owner is, is prepared to receive five thousand for that lot, which is at a discounted price, because he approves and, and agrees with the fact that a, a park would be a good idea. And in that light, sent up, on the basis of his discount, he's requesting the city council to consider paying, waiving the tap fees for his lot next, which is the six thirty-three Clay Street. So that will be up to the, the council to decide. So essentially, these are the two proposals, which is one for the monument and one's for the expansion. The proposal could be that the monument could be where the X is marked, which is at the northern end, because most visitors to the park would come up Lariat Street going west and turn on Clay. And so in short, these are the two proposals. If there are any questions, I stand ready to answer any more questions.
Anybody have any questions yet?
Is there a time period that you're kind of looking at? Yes. Very good. If the, okay. We would be prepared to pay the owner five thousand. He would turn the, the lot into, under the city's name. And then the city would commit to maintaining the park and so if it's approved, possibly, the city can consider working on the park this summer. Meaning, right now is weeds infested, so they would have to landscape it and add sprinkler system to that area. If that, you know, could be accomplished by the end of summer, twenty-fourth. And then in early spring, twenty-five, the memorial could have been produced, delivered, and erected. So that's the time, you know, eighteen months basically from, from now for the, for the monument and twelve months for the improvement of the park, of the new area of the park. One last handout. This is all summarized in a one-page note.
Thank you.
So if I may repeat just that, we're, we're, we're willing and happy to purchase it. The city will have to consider whether the owner's, Mr. Ayad's request for a waiver of the tap fees for his neighboring lot is something that you're, can or willing to do. That's with regard to the expansion of the park. And with regard to the monument, yeah, if you have any questions on, on it, stand ready to answer any questions. Oh, I did leave out, the city may wish to contribute to the production of the monument. And you'd be most welcome. Okay.
So council, Mr. Sanchez has been in several times. We think this is a very lovely proposal and, and you know, the family's creating a very lovely memory, a memorial rather, of his, of their parents, of his father, and the contributions he made to the city. Worked with, with Rob a little bit on this, and we think that it is manageable to go ahead and accept the offer for Mr. Sanchez to purchase the property from Mr. Ahad, Ahad. He has, Mr. Ahad has called me a couple of times today to, to discuss this. And in visiting with Mr. Vance, it is, you know, we think that the providing the, the tap fee, water and tap fee, is, is not very erroneous on the city, that we could do that. I would like to see some type of a timeline put on it though, so that we know that there is, that there is a house that's going to be built. He's getting in touch with, with DJ, the city planner. I don't know yet if they were able to speak, speak later this afternoon, if they spoke this afternoon or not, because I don't know if it's zoned. The gentleman is suggesting then, on both of the available lots, putting in a duplex.
A duplex on each one?
Yes. These are large lots. They're seven thousand.
Eight thousand eight hundred.
You want to come up to the microphone? Please, DJ.
Both lots are approximately eight thousand eight hundred square feet. It's not zoned appropriately for duplexes. I talked to him about some, but it varies processes you have to go through to potentially put two residences on there. He's willing to go down that route. He put in, as of right now, he would plan to put a single home on each lot, within going to planning zoning commission, asking for an additional dwelling and to be placed after the fact. So he'd be working on that, unless the new zoning code that comes out in January allows for duplexes in that zone, which I told him, like, I can't say one way or the other what it's going to look like, because I haven't seen a finished project, and neither has council or planning and zoning. So at this time, his plan would be to build a single home and ask planning and zoning for permission to an A D U on both, which would be allowed. Even though it's a manufactured, single-wide zoned area, you can put a stick-built house there. So that part is, is fine. It's just he'd have to go through the process and get a special review use for a additional dwelling.
What are the actual dimensions of the lot? At least on the.
Sixty-six by one fifty.
Sixty-six?
I measured him in Sacrament, so.
Each lot sixty-six wide?
Yep.
And how, one fifty deep?
One fifty deep. Because he has recently, he'd done a subdivision prior to this, because it was four lots, and none of them met the minimum standard. So he combined them into three lots and made it so that each one of them actually made the standard for building. Yeah.
And landscaping, would that, would it take the Italian sprinklers, water supply, and some?
Well, I would ask Mr. Sanchez, I can't guarantee that it would be totally finished by the end of twenty-twenty-four. We'll of course look for other grants and that sort of thing, but.
Well, on, on, on that topic, I, I will say one thing. I did get authorized, I have, Jody Sanchez had six children. One is deceased, so the family is five. My sisters have agreed that we would be happy to make a fifteen thousand dollar commitment over three years. So every April, five thousand to assist in sprinklers and other things, possibly. So that is something we're willing to commit to as well.
As you know, the, the Sanchez Park is the newest, basically the newest park as far as equipment goes. And it was completed with the Kaboom Grant two years ago. And, you know, open space is always valuable in neighborhoods and helps enhance the, the area. And Lariat is kind of a growing community, and children are around. And we think that this is a good investment for the city to go into partnership with the family.
And I remember when we, just a couple of years ago, when we put in the new equipment, that Sanchez family, a representative, came.
That was me.
That was you.
I remember that day.
As a matter of fact, I mentioned to you that day that we, we're thinking about this.
Yes.
So I appreciate the, the kindness that the Sanchez family has shown towards this park and towards Montevista. It's a very, it's a very sweet little park.
Thank you, it's, it's our pleasure.
I, I don't see any real good reason not to say, okay? Or not at least, not to at least move, just say, okay?
Mr. Ahad is on Zoom. If you guys have any questions for him, and if you'd like to. Basically.
Oh.
Hi.
Look that little thing.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the camera's up here.
Well, if I may say one last thing. Basically, this memorial is intended to be historical, in the sense that it brings, I mean, bringing water and sanitation into a community is an important milestone. And it was during the sixties when the Johnson administration wore on poverty and accomplishments were being made and so forth. So I just wanted to show you that, that headline, that originally went, when they were appointed in sixty-eight. So it's somehow connected, right? I mean, to get it done or something. So, yeah, this is long ago. So basically, the, the memorial would be the sculptures, I say, but on the front side would be a bronze bust of my father. And on the back would, would, would be a bronze plaque stating, you know, the, how, what happened. And the key players involved, which, of course, Mr. Paul Pacheco, who, who was president of the Lariat Water and Sanitation Board. So we would have important, you know, names of the people that played an important role during that period. And it would, you know, allow the, the community and Montevista to appreciate historical significant developments at that time. So thank you very much. But I stand ready to any other questions.
So any more questions?
No, just a comment, you know, living in Lariat, you know, I can see the block, see the park from my house. And my kids, you know, I've got four kids, and two of them are already grown, but they still go to the park to go play ball. And, you know, my two younger kids still play on the equipment over there. I get over there with them from time to time, and sometimes that park gets packed. You know, and, and it's, it's a good thing to invest into the community, you know? To give children a place to play, you know? It's, it's been that size forever. I played baseball in that park and, you know, to have it a little bit bigger and to have more space to run around is great, you know? And a great asset for the children in that area, so I'm, 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 I'm for it, so I think it's a good thing.
We'll, we'll put in the budget for, for next year, since we still have time.
We have, we're still crunching numbers.
So yes.
Do you guys have any questions for the property owner?
No.
I, I don't believe I do.
No.
So there was a statement that you had made about, on the time period about putting a house up there. Is that something that, how, how soon, maybe if we can waive those fees for your, your new tap? What are you looking at, as far as time period of putting a home or something there?
Yeah, thank you. I think that's a good question. And first, I, I appreciate all of you for having me and considering the topic. And thank you, Mr. Sanchez, for all your work on this. He, he's done a lot. It's really good. It's gonna be great for the town. So I've been working on it, actually, since I did the subdivision. I, I started kind of down the road. I have an architect and started down the road of doing a design and COVID was really bad for me. I, I work in real estate, and it, it was not good. The shutdown was not good, and it put it, it put it all off, so I'm getting back into it. I reached out to you guys actually in June, kind of starting to kickstart the project, so it's, I, I'm motivated, you know, to do it. It's gonna be my next thing. I shy away from putting, you know, a deadline or an expiration date on it. I'd rather just have a deal be a deal and, you know, know that, that it's done and that, that infrastructure is in place. But I did talk with the town manager, and she expressed that housing is really important. You guys have a need. I think all of Colorado is, is in that boat. And, and so as an alternative to sort of the, the voratorium or timeline, you know, we started talking about, what if we increase that density and, and try to make, you know, more, more housing units in those, those remaining lots? So I'd, I'd be happy to work with you and, and look at alternatives to that, to that deadline. And I can assure you, I'm, I'm very motivated to get this done. Right now, it's just an expense, you know, it's, it's hemorrhaging money. I have the tap fees already at six thirty-one Clay, which is the corner of Lincoln and Clay. And there's a monthly expense minimum, even if you're not hooked up or if there's nothing on it. So, you know, it goes from being kind of a, a sink and a big project to an income getter. I eventually wanna, wanna retire there. That's my plan, is to, you know, move in. And I love the neighborhood and have some history in the, in the valley. So I'm gonna be working on it as fast as I can.
Is a thought that property, property tax relief is until a property is sold? Or is it, what's the idea? That you're asking for?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I, I heard part of it on, on tax relief.
So you've asked for property tax relief, correct?
No, no.
Well. My, my idea was, you know, the, the water and sewer tap fees are, you know, are an expense, and they're kind of a, a barrier to, you know, to building. All the design stuff is really expensive, just getting out of the ground and getting to where you're framing. And so for me, I, I'm no big developer, you know, I'm, I'm a single dad and a hard, hard-working guy. And so any of those barriers that I can eliminate and, and get to the framing part really helps me out. So I wasn't really looking for, you know, tax relief, although that's a great idea, and.
Are you talking about six thirty-one?
Six thirty-three.
Uh, six thirty-one already has the tap fees in place. There's a tap there in the road. So I would be looking to, to have the same at six thirty-three, and then I would be ready, you know? As soon as I get the, you know, plans together and whatnot, we, we just hook up and go. So I, I was hoping to waive, to ask you to waive those expenses related to water and sewer for six thirty-three Clay.
And what did you say that Mr. Vance said about it? So Rob's in favor of it. You know, this is fine. I was just looking to see if we have it on the, online. I don't know what a sewer fee is for a new installation. A water tap fee is forty-five hundred dollars. And then he is correct, you know, with no, no service, he still has to pay the monthly water and sewer charge on the vacant land, unless we literally pulled out the meter. And then they would have to pay new tap fees again in order to, if they have to build on it.
So just curious if this goes forward, how soon would the city put those taps in?
So he's got it on the corner lot at six thirty-one, and.
But for thirty-three?
Probably not until he requested it, because, and so that's my concern. I mean, if we installed it tomorrow, he's, he would be billed tomorrow. So he wants to wait until he's ready to put construction on, on the property, which would make sense. And so my concern is though, I, I don't want this to drag out, you know, potentially what would happen, this is ten years. And in that timeframe.
The tap fees go.
Yep, ten-meter fees go up, and then it's a, a larger expense to the city.
I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know if I'm out of place here or out of turn, but I, I would, I would be happy to start making that, that payment as a, as a gesture that, you know, I am, you know, vested and moving forward and, and doing everything possible. So if, if we approve this and put, put that infrastructure in place, I, I would, you know, expect to cover that additional minimum cost, and I understand that's gonna be going up here shortly, but, you know, I think that's, that's part of it as a stakeholder. But, you know, I think that's, that's part of it as a stakeholder. So, I, I wouldn't expect you to, to wait until, you know, the minute I was ready. So.
He's willing to pay the monthly fees. So, we would install it at today's rates. And then as he's paying the monthly fees, so he builds, he's, the city's not out anything.
You wanna do that? You wanna incur that cost that you may be paying for two years or longer?
Well, yeah, and I, I think that's how I can demonstrate that I am, you know, serious about moving forward and, and getting this done. And it, it turns into real money, you know, if it goes up to a hundred dollars per, per lot, per minimum, you know, that, that winds up turning into twenty-four hundred a year or so. And so, it, yeah, like I said, you know, if I, if I don't get going on this, it's just an expense. And I'm, I'm willing to, you know, show you that I'm serious about, about doing this. So.
Seems like they have a lot of good partners that are wanting to move this forward.
Yeah.
Actually, on, on that topic, since you mentioned a timeframe too, it has been discussed that should the county agree that the title can be switched over to city, oh, I haven't, um, quickly, he says in a couple of weeks. So, basically, he would have the, the title, I mean, that.
Yeah, as soon as we have the title, then we could afford the tap fees and we do the task, probably in the spring versus.
Yeah. We need a motion, yes?
I would say we probably don't need to make a motion for the, uh, the statue.
Not yet, but we'll do that separately. Let's handle this first, but I'd say I'd make the motion to waive the tap fees on six thirty-three.
Clay.
Clay. To, and to expand the park by the lot on, at six thirty-five Clay, based on the presentation tonight.
He seconded that?
It's been moved and seconded.
But is there a timeframe on the two-year period?
So, for a timeframe, like you said, we would do the, as soon as we had title in hand for the property, we would do the taps at that time.
Okay, but I mean that if he doesn't get it built by two years, it.
No, if he's willing to pay the monthly fees, we're not worried about that at all. It'll just be, as soon as we have title in hand, then we would do the taps at that point. Do you have any more discussion? Did we get a second? Yes, Martha seconded. Loretta?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Prosser Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve, to waive the, to the sewer and tap fees on six thirty-three Clay to expand Sanchez Park to six thirty-five Clay.
Very good. Now the memorial? I think we probably have to wait on, judge any issues on that.
Well, the family has said that they would, they would pay for the memorial.
But, yeah.
Oh, you're just looking for permission to put it on the, on the park? Is that what you're looking for?
No, no, I mean, obviously, we would like to buy in, you know, for the, some commitments from the city if possible. I know budgets are constrained. So, I'm just saying that whatever, you know, you, you can do, it would be helpful. And if you also agree that we could reach out to foundations to also try and, but the bottom line is that Sanchez family would meet the costs of.
Have you looked at our budgets on this matter at all?
We're pretty tight right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know.
They're still crunching numbers.
Anita and I cut a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars out of the budget this morning. So, I, I think, I think the best option is for the city not to commit, to look to see if we can find some funding, but to help the Sanchez family if they move forward with, you know, any fundraising efforts or we can provide letters of support and, and go that direction.
So, I would say the only thing we need to make a motion on is the fact to put that because it will be city property. But then we allow them to put the statue there.
Yeah, it's gonna be beautiful.
Yeah, and I'd make that motion that we allow them to install the statue as presented in the park in the location of the new lot, as that's been established.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the statue to be placed in Sanchez Park as presented. Is there any more discussion?
And as we move forward, we'll see what we can do on the rest of it. But tonight, we just can't. Loretta?
Councilor Howard?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Prosser Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the Sanchez family to add the monument into Sanchez Park.
Congratulations.
Thank you, guys, for all your hard work and thank you for what you're doing for the community. Very much so. Appreciate that.
Do any of you remember Kenny Sanchez and his construction company? That's one of his brothers.
My eldest brother. Jody Sanchez had his construction company back in the day.
Do you remember?
And Ken, my brother, he took over. Unfortunately, he passed in twenty eighteen at a young age of sixty-six, yeah. Heart failure.
Well, we really, really appreciate you doing that.
Thank you, I appreciate it. We're looking forward to our partnership and our progress.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll move on to moving retirement plan from, Anna? You got me over here. Moving retirement plan from Mission Square Colorado Retirement Association.
So, council, we had, we did a work session a couple of weeks ago about switching accounts from Mission Square to the Colorado Retirement Association. And we said we would follow up, excuse me, we'd follow up with Mission Square and seek any additional information and have them, have them clarify some issues. It was a nice discussion. They went on to explain that they, they've got issues like everyone else as far as shortage of employees. And they apologized. They said, and we will follow up with additional stuff and we've not heard a word from them. And so, we would like to move forward with switching the accounts. And, and to give you a reminder, the city pays a half of a percent into a 401K. And the employee is vested after five years. The city then matches, the city puts three percent in a 457 that then the employees can match or they can pay additional contributions for their retirement. And so, what we're suggesting is that the minimum, well, the minimum for Colorado retirement is three percent. So, we're suggesting we put the three and a half percent together into the 401K.
401A.
401A, excuse me, I keep saying K. It's A because we're a governmental entity, thank you. And then allow, and then make it mandated that the employees have to pay into it at three percent. And so, that will help them to build a larger nest egg one day whenever they decide to retire. The 457 would still be available in either pre-tax or after-tax options. And so, that would be voluntary if they'd like to continue on with a, a plan like that. We do have a number of former employees that have either left the city or have retired that do have retirements with Mission Square. So, in this discussion, they can still leave their money there. Employees can choose to still leave their money there. The employees just can't contribute anything addition to Mission Square. They would, they would then be contributing into Colorado Retirement Association. And so, we've, we've come up with a new resolution that's not in your, in your packet that kind of outlines this if you would like to.
And it was the rules of the 401A that the three percent match was mandated. It's not we're mandating, it's the rules of the 401A.
And we had three employees that did not participate in that.
Correct.
But with their cost of living increase, that will be absorbed. So, there should be. We're making an assumption that they will be fine.
In, in general, my sense at the meeting where the work, work session was, most employees were reasonable with it. Is that your impression?
Yeah. You know, and Irene brought up a few questions of her concern. And so, you know, this still gives her the opportunity to leave her accounts where they are. She'll just be starting another account.
Can you, can the people who are, whether retired or active service, can they move to Colorado Retirement Association?
They could. We're recommending that if they don't, just, yeah, just because of the additional administration on city staff. So, we will notify all of them. They can either leave it with Mission Square or they'll need to find their own account advisor to decide what to do or, or roll their money into something else.
Sure. Make motion to approve resolution twenty, twenty-two-three dash thirteen rescinding retirement plan of Mission Square and adopting retirement plan for, with Colorado Retirement Association.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number two-three-two-three-dash-thirteen. Is there any more discussion? Loretta?
Councilor Howard?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Prosser Segula?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty-two-three dash thirteen resigning re- retirement plan with Mission Square and adopting retirement plan with Colorado Retirement Association.
And just for the record, you know, Colorado Retirement Association, one other thing that I like about it is they're only Colorado-based. And so, it's our own governmental entity supporting it. And so, they are easier to get a hold of. I wanna thank Mission Square. The city has been with them since nineteen eighty-eight. So, it's been a long relationship. But I do believe that this is in the best interest of, of our employees.
Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Contracts, agreements, and leases. Sell all the basketball courts to MHL. Is this Durbin?
See all those smiles up there?
So, seldom we have money coming in.
You happen to score it back out.
At least he's covered it.
But we're, we're enjoying it while we can.
For a moment.
So, we've sold the floors to a company out of Utah that purchased the floors. And we've received the, actually received the money transfer, the wire transfer for the floors. We started out with the floors and our bid for the floors was like thirty-six thousand dollars plus all of the equipment that was going along with them. I think our highest bid was like sixty-eight thousand dollars for both floors as well as all the equipment. What we've done is we've just sold the floors. So, we will be keeping the equipment. They did offer to buy the equipment from us though at double the cost. But in building or in replacing the equipment, it would be a year or more out before that we would get equipment, the basketballs, the volleyball nets and whatnot. So, we decided just to sell the floors. We sold those for a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And I will talk about later about replacing, what we're trying to do to replace those floors. So, that's my story. I'm sticking to it.
Durbin, excuse me, but I believe you said we sold them for a hundred and twenty thousand.
I'm sorry. We sold it for a hundred and thirty thousand is what we sold them for. But we gave a commission to the guy that sold them, uh, uh, five thousand dollars per floor. So, we actually ended up with a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars I hope to spend on new floors going in. So. Any questions? Smiles, smiles, smiles.
Hey.
Thank you.
Thank you, Durbin. Durbin had a sample. Do any of you wanna see what the sample floor is gonna be again? We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
The same sample you showed us before, right?
He showed us anyway.
Here's throwing, throwing.
So, you've seen these floors before. This would be my recommendation for us to purchase for the new floors. The new floors, we started off with this company. It's called Snap Sports and we did, sent everything out to bid. They ended up, they were the lowest bid. They started off at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for us to purchase these floors with. And one person could actually set these floors up. What they do is they come apart. These is actually four pieces to the floor right here. So, yeah, it would take a little bit of time for one person. But we're looking at having four or five people at a time set the floors up. Like I said, we started off at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars for these floors right here. And they are going to have two full basketball courts, four custom logos on each end. Get away with the middle logo. It was just way too expensive, twelve thousand dollars per floor for that logo. And it wasn't that pretty of a logo, so. For twelve thousand dollars. So, we would end up getting two basketball courts out of it, six volleyball lines painted, two pickleball courts on that floor right there that we could play. And so, like I said, we started off at a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars is what this floor would have cost us. We have, it's come down to a hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and thirteen dollars and twelve cents is what we would be paid for the floors. And right now, in that account, I believe we have a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. We would also need to purchase some scoreboards for each floor. So, I think we made out pretty good compared to where we started at. So, any questions on that, on the floors?
Thank you for fixing that.
It would just have to be patient.
Yes, you just have to be patient.
And Durbin pulling the strings to new people, right?
And Durbin did. He came and he said, well, I got him down to this. I said, go try again. He said, yeah. And he'd go back and say, I'm getting out of this. Durbin is a good wheel dealer. So.
I tried, I tried. You know, you have to be.
So, with that being said, the other part of recreation, in conjunction with LoR, the LoR Foundation and the Grisley Sports Alliance, which is Adam State University Kinesiology Program, we're going to be offering a flag football league in November and again in March. In coordination with the LoR program or with LoR Foundation, they are going to pay for everything up to one hundred kids. Each, each person gets a, we had, we had to pick, sorry, you won't like this part, okay? But each person had to pick what team was going to be represented. And since you need and I are Bronco fans, they will all be getting Broncos jerseys, no Raiders, okay? All Bronco stuff. And that, so each participant though gets a, they get the Bronco jersey. And this is co-sponsored by the NFL as well. They get a Bronco jersey. They get flags that say Broncos. They get, I believe that's it. Oh, they get a Bronco bag to carry all their gear in. So, they get their fees paid. Everything's being run by the Adam State Kinesiology Program. Basically, we're just hosting it. They provide the coaches and they're gonna be providing coverage for everything. And that, we're just basically. And that, we're just basically going to oversee it. And like I said, up to one hundred, uh, Montavista residents, youth, it's free. Everything's going to be paid for, and they receive all of that, so. We're really looking forward to that, doing that, and that's going to be, um, hopefully, November first. I'm sorry, yes. November first through, I'm sorry, November third through December eighth. And it'll be, of course, depending on weather too, and taking a week off for Thanksgiving. So hopefully we'll get good weather for, uh, for that program. Basically, those are skills that they're going to be teaching to the kids, uh, with flag football. And that, so we're gonna, uh, we're gonna run it first to second grade because we found out from, uh, Anika that that's where a majority of our kids are right now, is first to second grade age group. And like I said, it's all going to be flag football. Any questions? Alright.
Do we need to, uh, I think we've already voted for the seller of the floor and purchase of the floor, so.
Well, so you have, you gave us authority to go ahead and go forth and do it. We need your authority to spend the hundred and twenty thousand then to actually purchase because that's above what I, my approval is. So you need to make.
It wasn't a hundred and twenty, it was a hundred and fourteen. Hundred and seventeen, but I also need to get the scoreboards too. And the scoreboards are going to come in right around, uh, between eight hundred and a thousand dollars is what those are going to cost me.
Okay, so.
So, can we spend the entire one twenty?
Make a motion to authorize recreation to spend up to a hundred and twenty-four of, uh, floors and scoreboards. Second. It's been moved in second to authorize recreation to spend a hundred and twenty-four thousand?
A hundred and twenty. Oh, like a hundred and twenty-four better.
Hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Is there any discussion? Madana?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro- Tim Sivella?
That was a yes.
Mayor Becker?
Yes.
Motion carries to approve the red department to use a hundred and twenty thousand to for the courts and scoreboards.
Yay. Yay. Alright, so moving along. We are going to, we've been talking to, uh, Collard Parks and Wildlife and that, regarding hunter safety, uh, courses and, um, whatnot. So, we discussed that with them and they came up with some dates and that. Stephanie about it, she, uh, has been very cooperative with us. So on December sixteenth and seventeenth, out at Sky High, we're going to be offering a hunter safety class. And they will come up with all the information, the flyer for that, and pretty much we're just hosting it. And, um, I believe it's going to be free this time, except they're going to include a lunch, some type of lunch board and that, but it will be out at Sky High. And like I said, it's December sixteenth and seventeenth. So, that one. Any questions on that one? Do you know what time that starts? It's going to be, uh, Sa- that Saturday the sixteenth from eight to five. And on Sunday, it will be from eight to one. And they are putting together a flyer for that too. And that, that we'll put on our Facebook and on our page and whatnot, be handing out, so. And posting around the area, so. But, uh, sounds like it's going to fill really fast though, and that it's something that's really needed, so, here. And we're also, uh, November first, we'll be starting our bidding basketball registration. Well, let me, right now, you know, it's really cool, well, I think it's really cool anyway. On Saturday, we have four things going on. Uh, we have, uh, bidding basketball going on at nine AM and ten AM at the middle school. And then right after that, at eleven thirty, we'll have two football games that are going to go on at the, um, at the high school. And from that, that's just the increased participation that we're having from kids. And we're getting to host a lot more events here in Montavista. Uh, we'll have one team that travels as far as basketball goes and, uh, I'm sorry, two teams that travel and two teams that will stay here. And that's just with the increase in participation, so it's awesome. You know, and, uh, the boys are already asking us for their bidding basketball registration and we expect a real increase there too, um, as far as teams and, uh, members go for that program, so. And that's all I have. Any questions for recreation? Thank you. I'll leave my courts there. You all can look at them and I'll take them back in the morning.
So, so how about delivery?
Pardon me?
What's your timeline for delivery?
He said, uh, November is when, when we can get them, but I, of course, need to coordinate it with Stephanie. And we're also trying to work on, uh, I talked to him today. He's getting that coordinated. Getting them picked up, the other floors picked up, so. Hopefully that'll be soon. What they're going to do is two trucks come down, pick those up and same thing probably happened with this, two trucks will deliver those. But he was looking at, uh, you know, November as far as the delivery, uh, so.
Okay.
Company you sold the floors to, are you paying the freight?
No, they're paying for everything.
They are paying for everything?
They're paying for everything. They're paying the freight, everything.
Oh, nice.
Not so. We're not paying for anything. Better hustler than that.
You never know.
I want to make a correction because the bid with the shipping for the two floors is a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred thirteen dollars.
Okay.
So, Durbin will be buying his scoreboards with other recreation money that you still have in the budget. Right?
Certainly.
Right? Or am I wrong?
Laura, so the hundred and seventeen thousand, uh, that includes the shipping too for the floors. So the hundred seventeen thou- hundred seventeen, seven thirteen, that includes shipping, everything. So, that will be delivery of the floors as well. I forgot to tell you, tell you that. I got that negotiated too.
Nice, nice move.
So we want you to go and work on, there's some ti- free other areas in the budget. So, but yeah, we should be able to cover the scoreboards and everything with the hundred and twenty thousand, so, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Yeah, so we'll correct that in your packets.
Yeah, I, we did the packets before I was done with my negotiations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Durbin.
I think I've seen somewhere like an email that there's going to be a position open pretty soon.
Is it mine?
Award the contract for city electrical improvements.
Okay. Mr. Vance is out, out today, so I told him I'd read his report. On September the twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-three, bid advertisements for zero eight, twenty twenty-three, Montavista Electrical was released to the public. Notice was published in the local newspaper, on the city's website, and Facebook pages. Staff also sent the bid to electrical companies throughout the valley. On October the fourth, there was a pre-bid walkthrough with potential bidders that detailed each project and toured the various project sites. Bidders were allowed to ask questions in an effort to better understand each project. On October the eleventh, twenty twenty-three, bids were due and the city received two. One was from Canty Electric and the other from Valley Electric. Both participated in the pre-bid walkthrough. The bid was separated by individual tasks and consists of a total of seven different projects that we had around the city. Projects ranged from installing new lights at City Hall, power for holiday lighting, improvements at Sky High. Bids were asked, bidders were asked to bid separately each project and total the combined projects. The total of all projects were as follows. Canty Electric, sixty-three thousand, three hundred forty-nine dollars. And Valley Electric, thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred. The differences in costs are found in projects at City Hall, which includes new lighting and the removal of existing outlets, projects from trenching that involve trenching, and projects at Sky High. Valley Electric bid is far more detailed and includes specific project details, drawings and pictures that highlight their understanding of the projects. Staff is recommending that Valley Electric, while the lowest bid is the more detailed and provides enough documentation that demonstrates a good degree of understanding of each project. Therefore, staff would make the following recommendation. That city council award the twenty twenty-three Montavista Electrical bid to Valley Electric for the sum not to exceed thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars and allow city manager to sign the contract. Now, in, some additional information came into Stephanie. Cant- Canty Electric did the electrical work out at Sky High. And they, they are, um, you know, take a lot of pride in the project and feel like they need to be the ones doing the electric. But even with the bids separated out, if, even if we severed it and said, "Okay, we'll, we will award Sky High to Canty and the rest of the projects to Valley Electric", it still was substantially higher. And so, Rob had gone through them. That's our recommendation.
What work needs to be done at Sky High? Blowing stuff up out there or?
No, well, it's a, it's a variety of things. It's not Stephanie blowing things up. It's people with crop pots. And so we don't have enough outlets in the kitchen.
Nice.
And then they did install some outlets, but they're like up here. And anyone that uses a crop pot knows your cord is about this long. And so these will have extenders that can be pulled down, so additional things can be plugged in. What else is that?
Um, since we didn't get an office built in originally, we took over one of the conference rooms, which does not have enough outlets to sustain six staff members. Um, so we're adding more outlets into the office, um, as well as the hallways. Um, there's two outlets in the hallways, um, which does not even get the length of our vacuum to vacuum the hallways, much less have any holiday decorations or, um, add vending machines or ATMs into our hallways. Uh, we've also asked to have, um, in our event center, we have a, a two-twenty outlet that is just wires. I don't touch wires. Um, so I'm asking for some type of a connector so that when we have our bands, we can have the connector and they can easily hook up to our two-twenty outlet where now I just don't even let anybody touch it.
There's no plug on the two-twenty?
No. Right now it's literally just wires. The only person that I allow, or the only group that I allow to use it is Stampede Committee because they have an electrician come in to attach their connectors to it.
But it's closed off in a box, right?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yes, it is. Nobody even knows what it is unless if I point it out. Um, but I would like to use that as one of our, um, up-charge possibilities. Then if a band comes in and they want the two-twenty outlet, they have the connector, but it costs this much money. So, just improving some of it.
And there's lights in the parking lot included in this, right? Or is that separate?
No, that was separate. Um, we did also, um, ask for outlets on the outside of the building to plug in our Christmas lights.
Are you going to let them put up Christmas lights this year?
No, we call them holiday lights.
Our pretty sparkling lights.
Yeah, um, this, uh, one sent committee did approve, uh, seventy-five hundred dollars to purchase holiday lights.
That is actually donated from the Francis Sky High.
Oh, thank you. And so, uh, yeah, there's going to be some lights out there too.
So I make a motion to approve awarding the contract for electrical work. Valley Electric in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars. And allow the city manager to sign the contract.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in seconded to approve Valley Electric to do the various electrical jobs for the thirty-eight thousand, so said. And city manager signing. Is there any more discussion?
How many outlets you going to put in the hallway?
Um, I think we're adding four in the main hallway and one in the hallway to the restrooms.
Any more discussion? Madana?
Councilor Howard?
Yes.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro- Tim Sivella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve, to award the contract for thirty-eight thousand, eight hundred and to let the city manager, Gigi Dennis, sign.
Great. We'll go to staff proposals, reports, and actions. Durbin, you're first, but.
No, so Durbin, he already.
He did.
He already wrecked it.
While he was up here.
While he was up there.
And, um, I did.
I'm sorry.
I did dismiss, uh, Anika, um, from being here this evening, so Stephanie's up.
Stephanie, great.
Um, so we have had a busy couple months. Um, we ended September with thirty-two events. Um, right now we're on track to half thirty-three for October. And also if we get a couple more added in the last couple of weeks. Right now we have thirty-five events booked for November, um, and thirty-one events for December, which includes five holiday events, um, so far, which we're expecting to get a few more of those booked in December. Um, we're right about four hundred and fifty events for the twenty twenty-three year. And we're right about a hundred and twenty events for twenty twenty-four. This does not include any, um, indoor recreation that we would add with the new basketball courts. Um, so we do have some dates blocked off once we get that schedule finalized. Um, so that will definitely add to our number of events that we already have booked for twenty twenty-four. Um, we have a very busy weekend coming up. We have every single room in the entire building booked on Saturday. Um, so we have five different events going on. We have a wedding in the event center, a fundraiser in the banquet room, um, and then in the three small rooms, we have a baby shower, a birthday party, and a going-away party. So if you're bored, come, come hang out. We got plenty of things going on for you. Um, in connection with the recreation department, we will start our open walk-in program, program again for the winter. Um, this will go November first through May first. Um, and we did extend our hours just a little bit more to accommodate some of our community members. So it'll be Mondays and Wednesdays from seven AM to ten AM. And Mondays and Wednesdays from five PM to seven PM. So, we'll start to get that advertised here coming up, um, and get that out as best as possible so we can get some more community, community members over to Sky High. Um, as we just mentioned, we're getting our Christmas lights, holiday lights put up. Um, so we're hoping to work with, um, REC as well as my staff to get all of our decorations put up so that we can be in connection with the city and get those switched on the day after Thanksgiving. So we have a, a full month of sparkle out there. Um, other than that, we're just working on some more improvements. Um, as we just mentioned, we're working on getting some more electrical out there. Just a better suit, um, our needs of staff as well as our guest needs, um, to better accommodate them. We are still continuing the conversation with, um, Mark Berggraf and others um, in getting a better cooling system in the event center, um, just so that we can have better events as well and provide better customer service. Um, I'm working with, uh, Jim Belknap in getting some more wifi out there. Um, getting a separate, um, fiber line for the office staff. Right now we're all on the same one, so when we have large events, we kind of get on standstill. Our cameras are glitchy. We can't do any work on our computers, um, because the system gets overloaded. So we're adding another line so that we can maintain our work situation while events are going on. Um, we've also started to add Zoom bars into all of the meeting rooms. Um, so far we have one up and running, but we'll get those in the other two meeting rooms and then have a portable one out in the banquet room, depending on what type of an event and where they need that to go. Um, we've had several requests from community members as well as event hosts to be able to have that capability with their meetings and trainings. Um, we did just get ordered our new seminar tables. Um, so these are the, um, shorter in depth, so they'll only be eighteen inches in depth as opposed to the full, um, tables that we have currently. This will allow us to better accommodate our trainings and meetings and not give them the full-size tables. And then, um, a huge thank you to Public Works because they did put up some new lighting in the parking lot. Um, we now have a light over the east dumpster as well as off of the pump house that goes over where the staff parks. Um, it was a little dark out there when we were leaving at night and when we were taking trash out to the dumpster. So that just gives us a little bit more safety, um, and visibility to see what we're doing. And then lastly, I'm just working on the, um, pricing updates for all of our rentals as well as updating some of our policies and procedures and, um, hoping to implement a few more policies and procedures moving forward. Um, so I'm working with Gigi on those and we'll have those in front of you guys for review shortly. Questions? Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. Planning DJ.
Hey, Lee, everybody. So, uh, kind of slowed down a little bit recently, which is kind of nice. Um, during office hours, after hours, we've had lots. Um, during office hours, after hours, we've had lots of meetings. Uh, but we're continuing to work on the land use code. We should have the first draft. Um, we're gonna have a lot of data to go to planning zoning commission on our September sixth meeting. Um, and we're hoping to get a first draft done so that we can work through the, the work sessions that we need to have and all those things, uh, and get those on time. I think we'll still be on time as far as the grant goes. It may be a little bit later than I had hoped. I'd hope we'd have it done by the end of the calendar year. It's looking like it'll probably be close to January before we're able to get it to you guys. Uh, but we want to make sure we do it right the first time with a good product. Um, so as long as I get done by March, I meet the grant standards. I was just hoping to get it done. We normally do codifications, I'm told, in January, and that's what I was trying to do. So we'll probably ask you need to push back codification until we get it finalized and then we'll just codify later this year as opposed to doing it in January as usual. Uh, at the same meeting in, uh, November, we're gonna have the planned unit development, uh, for Sky High. That'll go out at the public meeting and public hearing for that, that same day. Um, I'm getting quite a bit of interest from the public on that. Uh, a lot of requests for the packet itself, a lot of misunderstandings. Um, I had one person that was concerned, we're gonna build a bunch of homes there. Um, so just getting that packet out, getting that information out to make sure we have good information getting out to the public so they're not misunderstanding what our intent is there. Um, so as most of you guys know, we had the REC meeting last night, uh, the community meeting. I think the ones that were able to come, it was a good showing. We had a really good showing of, of people out there. Um, even though we kind of trapped the many cheerleaders' parents by placing them at the end of the agenda as opposed to in the beginning, um, it worked out really well because even though a lot of them left with their littles, they all paid attention to the entire thing. And then I'm hoping we're gonna reach back out to them. I'm not hoping we will. We are gonna reach out, back out to them and see if any were interested to participate in the action groups and hopefully we get some participation from some of those parents who were able to sit through that, um, entire process. It was nice because we had people that were passionate about it, um, and they want to continue to assist in the process. It wasn't just, uh, to check the block. There were people that, I mean, we basically kicked them out at the end. It was like, okay, some of us want to go home. And we had to make some of them go away. So it's good that we, we have that kind of participation, that kind of citizenry that cares that much. So I was excited to see how that worked. Xavier did a good job of keeping all that on track and coordinating it so that it went off pretty much without a hitch. Um, as you can see, the renovations on the building are still moving along. Um, we're getting closer. Now it's kind of the T's parts where they just take a little bit longer. Um, you should see some new concrete work going in the next few days. The lighting is gonna start going up in a couple of weeks. The motor for the gate and all those things will start going up. The new sign will go up in about three weeks. Um, and it'll just kind of keep, continue on. They're on track to finish before the contract was due. So we should be moving along just fine with that. Uh, next week, I traveled to Avon to give a presentation on the Main Street Live Grant, which was the million dollars we asked for for the, uh, alleys between Jefferson Adams and Washington. Uh, so I'll go up there and do the presentation for that, hang out with Gigi for, you know, seven minutes and tell everybody about what we gotta do, and then I'll drive home. Um, so really hopeful on that. I've got some good feedback. Some people say it's a long shot. Some people are excited about it. So I'm kind of curious to see how it plays out. It'll be my first attempt at working with Dola on any of the Energy and Mineral Impact, um, grants. So, um, one action item for you guys this evening is the URA. Um, they're continuing to work on blood removal. They're continuing to plan for, uh, helping build homes. Unfortunately, the proposal that they accepted for the cafe to go in at one seventeen Adams, um, the, the owners are having to back out so they can't financially make it. They've had changes in their lives. Um, so they're going to revert the property back to the URA. Um, and the URA has passed a resolution to pass it on to the city. And the reason that we want the URA to pass it to the city is we're in the middle of a grant writing process with a company that's, uh, is named TerraCon, and they're writing an EPA grant for us. Um, inside that grant is assessment and abatement of asbestos and mold and environmental contaminants. So at this time, if the city owns that property, they can do any mold abatement and asbestos abatement inside that grant, which is a zero match, up to a million dollars. And we can maybe strip that building out, then give it back to the URA, put a new board layout, we can finish it. We can make some decisions, but it's not gonna be blight at that point, and it won't have contaminants. So that's kind of why I would like to have it moved back to the city. The city must own it when we apply for the grant, which is November tenth. So we just got a level one assessment done. Uh, once we get the data back from that, then we will have the deed for the city. And then I just would like a motion to say that you guys will accept that deed. And then, uh, we'll do a resolution, uh, for the next council meeting as well. But I, if you guys are uncomfortable with it, I definitely need to know now so I can make some plans because it will affect our grant. Um, but I think it's the best move for us going forward. It actually came at a good time. If it had been in another thirty days, the URA would have been stuck with that building and no way to pay for changing it. This gives us the opportunity to at least have a funding mechanism to make that property usable.
What building is this?
One seventeen Adams.
Right next to the same drawing.
Right between Simppler and Larry Roberts. Simppler Bank and Larry Roberts. It's in pretty rough shape.
So I would like a motion to, for you guys to accept that property from the URA.
I would move that we, that the city accept the property from URA.
Second. Been moved in second to accept one seventeen Adams from the URA back to the city. Is there any more discussion on it?
What if you don't get the grant?
It actually, I mean, the city can then decide to give it back to the URA and we'll look at some funding mechanisms. I mean, the URA is stuck with it either way because in the deed, it requires them to revert it back if they cannot complete the, their proposal. So one way or the other, it's coming back to either the URA or the city. And the URA has no funds to make those kinds of fixes and changes.
Sure.
It's gotta be fixed because it can't be torn down.
Yep. It has shared walls structurally.
Oh, boy, other property. To make such good deals, we are just amazing. This, this one's gonna work out though because he's gonna get that grant and it's gonna be taken care of.
TerraCon has a seventy-eight percent success rate for this style of grant, so.
That would be great.
I'm done. Discussing.
You're done?
I'm done discussing.
Gigi's helping, so. When Lorenz is ready, she can.
I did try to talk slow this time.
You do? You do?
I did that time. I was way slower that time.
You, you actually did that time. I was able to understand everything you said that time.
Just saying, matter of report, Skirvin still wins. You guys aren't even close.
Wait till my next report.
He brought in under twenty thousand. You're bringing me a dilapidated building.
Wait till the executive session.
That doesn't count. That's on private.
Hi, I'm Lenny, mayor.
Go right ahead.
All righty. Councilor Howard?
Aye.
Councilor Locke?
Aye.
Councilor Lorenz?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tenzavella?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to allow the city to accept the property at one seventeen Adams and in return, give it to the Urban Renewal Authority.
No, we're accepting the deed.
We're just, we're accepting it from the URA to the city.
So just cross it, cross up this for a break.
Um, other than that, uh, we're actually kind of slowing down a little bit. I did not turn in a grant. Um, just capacity-wise, we weren't able to complete it in time. It was a super long one, so it was complicated. Um, I think I have the way to wait for another company to write it for us for free. So try and step back a little bit and make sure that we have the ability to manage the things we're trying to do. Um, we can only fit so many penguins on the iceberg and then we start killing them. So I prefer not to kill the penguins that are important. So kind of stepping back a little bit, making sure that we're doing something that is actually achievable long-term. So, um, questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, don't go away.
There is a question. Please stand.
Yeah, thank you. So DJ, explain to them the other properties that TerraCon will be, um, assessing for us as we're working on that grant.
So that grant will assess City Hall. Um, so we have two properties for assessment and abatement. It's City Hall and one seventeen Adams. We had abatement on, uh, the theater. However, we cannot use abatement on a theater because we did not get a level one assessment done when it was given to us. Um, and whenever we acquire a property, we have to get that level one assessment done because otherwise you can never use an EPA grant against it because you can't prove you didn't cause it. Um, so City Hall is old enough that it wasn't an issue, um, but the theater, because it was given to us after twenty eighteen, um, that's a problem. So we weren't able to use that for the abatement process. Um, I'm sorry, after twenty sixteen. I think we got it in eighteen if I remember right. Anyway, so we're into the theater. Um, we're also going to be doing an assessment on the Boys and Girls Club property next to the railroad track. Um, we'll be looking at assessment at Whispering Pines, um, which is the old motel near Sonic by Marsh Park. Am I missing one? City Hall, one seventeen, theater. Nope, that's all. Um, but it's open to the community up to a million dollars. Um, two hundred thousand dollars must go toward abatement. Um, we will eat that in City Hall in a heartbeat. So I'm not really concerned about meeting that need. Um, and it's up to a million dollars. So any other community members that have property that they cannot afford to get the assessment on, the grant is set up and designed for community assessment so we can do assessment on them. We cannot do abatement on anything we don't own. Um, so if there's other commu-, uh, community members that own buildings, we'll be reaching out at that, you know, when we get to that point and once we get the grant to add any to that until we hit that threshold of a million dollars. So it's a, and it's a non-matching grant. And inside the grant, if we, when we get it, it'll have admin costs added into it. Um, but we're doing to probably write our piece so the grant management's all run by the organization that gets the proposal so that way we become a passive entity. I'd rather have somebody else do the work and us get the money for the admin.
There's a motion on the floor. You guys never officially voted on the deed.
Yeah, we did. Yeah, we did. Everybody.
Motion carries to approve to allow the city to accept the deed at one seventeen Adams.
We, we, we did it except for she said the wrong thing at the very end. But we did, we did make it all the way through. She just carried the wrong name.
Asked as amended then.
Wasn't amended. She just wrote it down.
Anything else, ma'am?
That's good. Thank you.
Thank you, DJ. Right, city attorney report. And keep it short. Gigi's getting tired. It's time to go home.
Time to get to the executive session.
If you don't get a motion, we don't.
I'm getting hungry.
Mayor, council, so, starting out, municipal court. We're up to sixty-six cases on the session now. What we've got is shopliftings, obstructing police officers, assaults, harassments, thefts, possession of drug paraphernalia, trespass, menacing, drug house activity, disorderly conduct, unlawful possession of marijuana, vape pens on school property by minors and tobacco products, uh, possession of alcohol by underage persons, traffic cases, running stop signs, speedings, criminal mischief, dangerous dogs. So if you ever want to come into municipal court and witness what's going on there, it's a very fluid process of a lot of things. At one time, I've brought in a new legal assistant to help with this load and she sits there with me and she takes the notes while I'm talking to the defendants in the back and working out dispositions and so forth. So, um, we're kind of, in that vein, we've kind of reorganized our staff. Tammy Guyagas is our chief assistant now and Dulce Maldonado is our new legal assistant. So if you're welcome to come by anytime and, uh, meet them and, uh, introduce yourselves and so forth. So they're doing a great job though. I'm very pleased with, uh, what's going on there now. Um, so, um, in that regard too, the, uh, we've had some discussions with the judge and, uh, the chief, um, and, um, on the possession of, um, vape pens. We had about six cases on, on vape pens in the school out of this whole bunch of cases. And, uh, the, what's the best way to handle all this? So we're gonna sit down together and probably try to get somebody from the school in there. Most of this legislation on, uh, smoking and all this came about around two thousand six and seven. And, uh, the school was asking for some help with, uh, a lot of kids, uh, uh, either with marijuana or, um, smoking and this kind of thing. And now that we're into the era of vape pens with all this, it kind of adds a new dimension to the whole thing. So, uh, we're gonna try to sit down with them and see if we can figure out something that is a, uh, direct diversion right into the program on this. Instead of taking them all away, these, you know, fifteen-year-old kids with first-time offenses and so forth through the whole criminal justice system. So we'll be trying to get that together in the future. Um, in district court, uh, we processed an extreme risk protective order before Judge Olson in district court last Friday. Um, the police confiscated two guns, uh, which, uh, a lady was using to threaten suicide. It's a pretty sad case, uh, originates with original, uh, abuse by a father. And these are the consequences you get later on with this type of situation in a family. And, uh, she had, uh, become a security officer, so she knew weapons pretty well. She led the police right to the weapons and, um, both of them, both nine millimeters. One was in the chamber already. So, um, she, the police confiscated those. You have the process you have to go through of, uh, initial, uh, uh, hearing and, uh, then a final hearing on this about whether they should be given back. And I, I think the police department is really more concerned with, you know, this is a judicial decision. Has she received enough counseling now and so forth to receive these? And I think, uh, the chief expressed that he'd rather, whatever the outcome is, is not, uh, whether they're given back or not, is not, uh, quite the question. It's, uh, you know, who's ordering the giving back? Uh, so, uh, uh, that, uh, we, is the decision of the judge. So we'll be finishing that up on Tuesday at another hearing. The, uh, we had, uh, Colorado Sun is back, uh, with us with another request for the body cam footage of the shooting. Uh, this time, they tried to disguise it as a, uh, civilian. Because civilian is in the, uh, statute about who can request this. But they put all their requests, uh, in the form of their letterhead by the Colorado Sun. So we said, no, that's a, that's a ruse. You're really still the newspaper asking for this. And, uh, the legislature made, uh, certain exceptions. They didn't say that everybody could get this. So that's where we placed it. We'll see what happens on that. Uh, see if they, uh, take us into the judge, uh, the judge, the, uh, chief wanted us to process this all the way. So that's what we did. And, uh, we will, uh, see what the final outcome is. This is going on for a couple of weeks after the first session with Colorado Sun about this. And I haven't heard anything back. Uh, so that's where that sits right now. And, um, then on October the sixth and the seventh, uh, was the city attorney training conference at Crestview that I attended, which is, which I wasn't here. Um, we went up there and Seth and I both attended that. A lot of material, uh, cora and coma, uh, sixty-four cases they gave us as homework to review. So we're still working on some of that. And anything that comes out of that, I'll try to make the city aware of if you, if it looks like a red flag to the city. Um, harassment, uh, in the workplace, uh, the, uh, dangerous condition in public facilities. And they've come out now with, uh, a book that's gonna be published pretty quickly, what they call Bob's Rules of Order, that's really more particular. It's aimed at Colorado municipal government. And, uh, we've ordered that already. And it has, uh, a lot of, uh, things in there that, uh, try to simplify your rules of order for you. And we're gonna analyze that and, uh, make any recommendations to you. And probably, uh, we tried to get a copy today. They said every city attorney in the whole city and in the whole state is trying to order that book right now. So they said, we'll try to get it to you as soon as possible. Um, we have some things like, um, you can, uh, vote, you know, for it. They still preserve the secrecy of vote to replace a city council member, I think. Um, and, uh, but, uh, not when you're appointing city officers. And that, uh, requires open, uh, open voting. So, uh, that's just an example of some of the things that we're looking at there. Um, and, uh, I've received a fifty-six-page binder from DJ with comparison definitions for the land use code. Uh, and we've analyzed some of those already in the materials that I. and we've analyzed some of those already in the materials that I gave him. And we're gonna be looking at those. It's gonna take some time. What the, what he's done there is take the city's present definition and then compare it with the, uh, dictionary for, uh, zoning, and, uh, then the, uh, I think the DOLA code itself, that they put out and what those definitions are. So the definitions are important, and we'll be spending time looking at that and making our recommendations back. The, uh, ACLU has come out with white paper and, uh, a lot of things that they do we have problems with, but, uh, this one, I think, is gonna be helpful, because it's a designation of, um, persons, PR bonds for persons being picked up by the police, and it's a comparison with the statutes which have to correlate to our municipal ordinances on releases for, um, uh, municipal offenses, and, uh, PR bonds, and when you can do that, when you can't, so. It's several-page document, and it goes through, it looks like probably a hundred offenses or so that we've gotta analyze there. I was in a conference, uh, today again on the COG designation under ten forty-one powers, uh, and, uh, we've got those up for, I think, either next session or the session after this for, uh, adoption by the city. I can't say that I'm real happy still on some of the rules and regulations. The, uh, IGA and the ordinance itself, I think we could get through okay. But, uh, when you read the, uh, rules and regulations, it seemed to me that it has quite a potential of putting a significant workload on the city clerk's office if we get one of these applications in. So, that's what we've been discussing this afternoon. I voiced my opinions about that. And I think, um, David Baumgartner, who is the COG, one of the COG attorneys, might be joining us on the, either by video or in person, when that comes up for adoption in a week or two, a couple of weeks. So those are the things I've been working on since, uh, the last time I talked to you. Do you have any questions, you know, otherwise?
Thank you, Gene.
Your patience, God.
City manager.
Okay, so we've been meeting still with our water engineer on our wastewater treatment plant, element engineering, so those, um, plans are coming along pretty well. We've also been meeting with CDOT regarding the multimodal sidewalk, and, um, we'll probably hold, or the consultant will hold public meetings probably in January. This one could be a tough one. I, I just have some concern over, I think we need to have more people talking about it and understanding the project, product, project. You know, the standard sidewalk now is five feet. So, about my height minus a hand is a sidewalk. And it's going from the Alta Station, thereby across from, um, Safeway. We'll go down, um, we'll go east and swing around and go up Sherman Avenue to, uh, Sky High. And we've got three businesses along there that do not have an official drive-in and no curbs, and, and so, and that's Pizza Hut, The Liquor Store, and Polished Bean, or Polished Edge. We've got some, a couple of houses. Even though it's commercial, there's still a couple of residents on that road, and they already have a short, um, front lawn. And CDOT's not sure of all of these properties, how much they have been encroached on for their right-of-way. But, um, that one, I, I just, it's gonna be, I think, a tough one for the community. It'll be great once we get it done, but I just, we're gonna have to make sure people see what we're, what it's going to be and, and what we're doing. So, the next time you drive down, you're going east. Just, just really kind of slow down and just really observe what's there on the north side of the road, and you'll see what I'm talking about. But it'll be really cool once it's done. We met this, this week with the Stampede Committee and the county regarding the Sky High campus, and kind of talked about some plans out there and how things could be rearranged, and trying to, to meet everyone's expectations, I guess, get the best plan we can come up with. Met with the Department of Health over at the Valley Three Theater this week. To me, it's a rather weird law, or I don't even know if it's a law, regulation. When it was ran by volunteers, it's okay. And public health doesn't go in and check on it. But because it's being leased to an individual, they have to comply with all the health standards. So, they did make a couple of recommendations, because we have Boba-Licious Coffee in there now. Cindy Wright, this is kind of the area that she used to handle for a school district in Denver. So she was able to make some changes that were looked favorably upon. So, I think we're gonna be okay. It's not gonna cost us an arm and a leg. We had a really good, uh, presentation with AT&amp;T this last week. They delivered fifty computers to the Delta Center, and, um, so that was a pretty cool thing for those kids to say, here, it's yours, you can take it home. So that was, that was very positive, and we appreciate AT&amp;T's interest in Montavista and, um, and in Kids Connection. We went over there and, and they toured Kids Connection and saw the 3D printer that they were able to purchase and some other equipment this last year, so that was fun. Jim, or maybe Brandon, will talk about this on their report, but this week we've been going through the, um, telephone update. And so we're able to receive a telephone system from Larimer County. They were giving it away to anybody that wanted it. And their system is a lot newer than our older system, so Jim nabbed it for Montavista. And so, Jim and his team have done a great job this week getting everything transferred over, and we've all got pretty little shiny toys now on the desk, and, and so that's pretty cool. Nita and I've been working a lot on the budget, and, um, so we've been making some changes and, and moving things around at all of your requests, so. It's, uh, it's gonna be a tough year. You know, we had to, we decreased it fifty-nine thousand just because of this Senate Bill two thirty-eight. And then, and then the concern of what happens if HH passes, so. It's a struggle as we're growing. And when you grow, you know, we don't have enough, enough wiggle room in there. I will be in Avon all week next week. I'm still on the Energy Mineral Impact Advisory Board, so we'll be going through the grants, and of course, I'll have to abstain when DJ's talking about our Montavista po- project. I want you to put on your calendars, so you think about it. Our, our holiday employee appreciation lunch will be December the thirteenth. We don't have de- details as far as what we're doing yet, but some of the staff has been working and coming up with something nice, so we can end the year with a bang. And then finally, don't be rushing out at the end of this, because we have an executive session. So if your tummy's growling yet, you're not going home to eat for a while. Okay, that's it. You have any questions?
Do not, thank you. Council committee, city commission, council reports. Counselor Lorenz.
I'll keep the truck tonight, for a change.
Victor?
Second, Jason.
Counselor Howard?
Had a meeting last night. Recreation Academy for, we're okay, and so it's good. It's a start. It's a start. One foot in front of the other, so. Martha?
I was extremely encouraged with our ERC meeting last night. Many of us have been with that through, from the beginning, and, and seeing all of those people there last night, the new faces, that are finally starting to say, hey, we're part of the public and we can take part of this. Yeah, you can. That's great. Glad you're here. You know, but it, it just takes a while for people to understand that we want their input. So I appreciate that. The only other thing I had, I, I did an interview this week, and it was brought up about, I was asked lots of questions about the URA. I was asked lots of questions about the chamber. I was asked lots of questions about everything except the council. When I finally said something to the effect of, I'm not those people. That's not what I said, but it's what I was thinking, just to be perfectly honest. It was brought up again, and we've discussed this before. It would behoove the city, the residents, our guests, our tourists, our businesses, everyone, if we would at least have a biannual meeting with all of these agencies together and come up with a way, maybe, you know, a certain email thread or something, that in between that, I mean, I know, especially after this week, none, none of us want to talk about adding another meeting to the calendar. But, we've, we do need to pull in and start working together on this, and, and that was a valid point. And it was, it is something we've discussed doing before. I just don't know if there's been any, any mo- any movement on making that happen just yet, but I really would like to see that happen. I've wanted to see that happen. And again, I understand, none of us want another meeting. I, I know that our city staff has had one of some sort every night this week. I've had one three nights this week, so I get it. Don't want another one, so I'm kind of hoping we can get by with a biannual. Maybe a quarterly.
Every two years?
Uh-huh. I'm sorry. I said that the wrong way.
No, you didn't. You didn't.
Twice, no. Amendment, twice a year, twice a year. I think quarterly might be a little too much. If, if we can put into place another sort of communication that puts all of us together, keeps us on the same page between the twice-a-year meetings. So, and that, so that's all I've got.
Sounds good. Want to back up what Gigi said about AT&amp;T? That was great. Fact they came in and brought those fifty computers to those young folks and passed them out. Some of them had no response. Some of them were beyond ecstatic. Some of them just couldn't read. I think they were really excited, but they didn't know how to take it, because when all of us walked in them rooms, there were some of them that were like, what are these people doing here? They are in my turf, right, but it was great. And then they gave a good donation to Kids Connection as well, uh, thirty-five thousand, five hundred, wasn't it? And the guy that was representing AT&amp;T was, uh, they actually had done 3D printing of the base. So when they opened it up, it was like, oh, finished! So they gave it to him, and he was very intrigued and full of questions on how the Kid- Kids Connection is running. So, it was very, very informative, and it was good for him, because he will take that back to his board, so. I think that Kids Connection will be in play for more, hopefully. And then it was well represented with District Twenty-two, was that right? Sandra, what was she represented? Sandra? That lady that was, the governor's person that was on the phone all the time.
Oh, no, she run, uh, Sarah Blackhurst. She runs Action Twenty-two.
Action Twenty-two.
Yeah.
She had a lot of good things to say about, for those young people that they wanted to get into politics, so that was pretty cool. I've talked to some people, and I want to give a shout-out to, of course, the staff for all they do, but I've had community members and people from other communities compliment Montavista on what's been going on, and the fact that, um, Gigi's in lead of this, and they're very complimentary to the city and Gigi and the staff, but so we can pass that on. So we're being noticed in the valley. Not for bad stuff, either. With that, we will recess, council.
We gotta make a motion before you can do that.
There we go, okay.
Well, no, wait, sorry.
Can we take?
He said it, sorry, guys. He, he recessed us, we're done.
Can we take like a five-minute break?
We will recess for five minutes, and then we will be back. Now we go into the executive session.